At 4:00 PM, let's call the Isabella County Board of Commissioners work session. Hybrid meeting to order. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Locks, please. A roll call vote.
Commissioner Engler. Commissioner Jelzinski. Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner Swainy.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
All present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Clerk Locks. Next, that brings us up to the approval of the agenda. We have general public comments. We have one item under presentations and special reports this evening. That is the Central Michigan District Health Department update. And we have the CMD HD Health Officer Steve Hall to present that to us. We have nothing under appointments to boards and commissions. That brings us to item number seven, committee reports. Finance and Administration Committee.
Finance and Administration is all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That next brings us up to the Criminal Justice and County Affairs Committee.
Criminal Justice, County Affairs Committee is all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That drops us on item number C, Human Resources and Public Works Committee.
Human Resources and Public Works Committee is all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Under Governmental Affairs, Vice Chairman Hope, do we have anything under intergovernmental affairs this evening? Thank you. We have nothing under the Administrator Controller Reports. Hold on one moment, please. That brings us to unfinished business. We have nothing under unfinished business. Dropping to new business. We have two items. Consider adopting Isabella County Board of Commissioners Resolution Number 21-10-02, Register of Deeds Karen R. Jackson, 2021 Register of the Year, and authorize the board chair to sign the same. And then we also have to consider approving reimbursements to townships in the city of Mount Pleasant for the special election 911 surcharge costs. After that, we have general public comments, announcements, and an adjournment. That runs through the agenda. As spoken, can I get an approval of the agenda, please? I heard a motion and I heard a support for the approval of the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same? We have an agenda for tonight. That next brings us up to item number four, General Public Comments. I'd ask for any public comments, be either be live or are the virtual. It'll be limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address when you log in. First, we'll go to the live version. Anybody in the audience tonight? Please go ahead. Dr. Bills. Thank you, Dr. Bills. Anybody else in the live audience? I see one hand being raised. Please come up.
I just also wanted to talk about the election reimbursement cost. Apparently, in your previous discussions, there's been arguments that have been argued for and against. So, in my investigation, I really, apparently, there's been a question about establishing a precedent for reimbursing us for this type of an election. In my investigation, I did not really find any real history for special elections directly for county business or program. I've been a clerk since 2012. Maybe there was something before. I did call the clerk's office and they were unaware of anything either. So, as far as creating a precedent, I'm really not sure if we should live in a world of what if. I think we need to tackle problems as they come. The second is, we know as clerks and township boards that we need to prepare for elections that are unexpected during non-traditional election years. However, I feel this particular election was due to an error, not necessarily a change in circumstance or position. So, you know, I know, to me, it comes down to accountability. I'm not sure who keeps track of the renewal dates of these bond issues or surcharges. I don't want to throw Mark under the bus or anybody else under the bus, but I do think that we have to be aware that as budgets go for local townships, we're not necessarily creating big budgets for non-election years. Of course, this election isn't going to break probably any of us, but it would be appreciated if we might be considered to be reimbursed. I also wanted to say that, of course, all of us feel, or most of us feel, that the 9/11 renewal did serve the best interest to our residents, but really, truly, that is a matter of opinion. There were a few no-voter. So, you know, we need to take that into consideration, too, that it wasn't necessarily everybody's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Return back to the live audience. Does anybody else have anything to say in the live audience? All right, I'm now going to turn to Nicole to the virtual side. And we do have people, so I will. How many hands do we have raised? Okay, then let's bring that person in. If they can hear me, three minutes and name and address, please. Okay, I see a hand. Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, my name is John Pediac. I am the Denver Township Supervisor, and I am also the Chair of the Isabella County Michigan Townships Association. I kind of feel I am speaking on behalf of the general membership of our Township Association of Isabella County, when I would encourage our county commission to vote in favor of the reimbursement for the election from this last August. As was speak spoken to during our, the live comments just previously, this was an election that was not planned by either the county nor the townships to have come up for this year. But just like we would with any other entity that would be putting on a special election, whether it would be hosted by a school, or I would feel the county should, in this sense, step up to the plate and help with the cost of the said election. We as townships don't budget in the off-year for elections like this, and it seems like we are getting hit with a lot of elections as of late and going to be getting hit with elections. A lot of stuff seems to be happening that wasn't happening before. We need to not necessarily worry about, I think, setting a precedence here, because it's not really something that happens very often, I feel. We haven't had this kind of an occurrence that happened with the county before, but just like it would be for the school, I think somebody needs to step up to the plate and kind of somewhat accept some ownership here. If it was the school and they had to do this, they'd be paying for the bill. The county made a mistake somewhere in the, in the system and overlooked the expiration of the 911 surcharge that needed to be in place, and as a result, had to put it on the ballot. And we then as townships had to run that election, and I feel that we should go ahead and encourage you to help us with the cost. And we're not asking for 100% cost of the coverage, just to help us out with some of the costs here. So, with that being said, I'll go ahead and read the floor.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have anybody else, Nicole, on the line?
We do not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I will close the virtual part of general public comments, and that will bring us down to presentations and special reports. We have one presentation and special report tonight. It is Central Michigan District Health Department update. We have the Health Officer Steve Hall. And Steve wouldn't mind stepping right up there. I will say why Steve is getting set off, that I've had an opportunity to get to know Steve a little bit better this year. I know, since being named Chair, I pointed myself to the Central Michigan District Health Department Board, and I find that quite interesting every month. Commissioner Moreno, who's also the Vice Chair of that Board, serves on it with myself. And it's, it's very, I don't know what it was in previous years, but it's probably one of the hottest topic boards to sit on, and Mr. Hall here probably has one of the hottest, the seat's probably feeling pretty cool tonight where he sits, because he's not sitting in his office chair. I'm sure that's an awfully warm seat sometimes, so. He's a gentleman, I think, who gets portrayed very poorly sometimes, and I think he does an excellent job in our community. I think he represents it very well. And I can guarantee you, he works at the best of his abilities. I can't say more about that than than that. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, see if hopefully you're all set, ready to go. You got to speak up a little bit, because I can, like they said, eat the mic.
So, thank you. I have a quick presentation today. I was asked to give a little presentation in terms of COVID response at this point. So, to start out, I will just say for commissioners that aren't that familiar with our health department, we are what's known as a district health department, so we actually serve multiple counties. This better? Thank you. So, the Central Michigan District Health Department actually serves Aaronack, Clare, Gladwin, Isabella, Osceola, and Ross Common County.
See, in the real world, we could edit all this out, but we're live, so there you go.
So, again, a multi-county health department, so to say that we've been busy in the last year and a half is an understatement. But again, I'll, I have kept data as we go through this presentation for all six counties, because I'm actually going to use this presentation again on Thursday. But I will focus on Isabella County tonight. So, as we look at COVID case information, right now, currently, Isabella County has had 6,807 cases. Fortunately, we just hit our 100th death in Isabella County attributed to COVID. And one of the categories that I tend to look at to see how we're doing is a seven-day case average per million population. Right now, we are at 661.1 in Isabella County with a 12.4% test positivity rate. To give you a little comparison, in May, Isabella County was at 106.32 for the seven-day average and 5.8% for test positivity. And then June, those numbers were 36.8 for the seven-day average and 4.5% for test positivity. So, we're really hoping we can start trending back down towards those June numbers. Next slide. Trying to give you an idea on the historic case count, so you can look at the different surges that we've had. So, you'll see a surge there in November of 2020, and this is for all six counties. We had 3,207 cases. April of '21 was 2,894 cases. June and July was when we were really all having that hope. You know, we were, we were all feeling good about where we were at. Those of us that have been vaccinated, we're told, you know, you can somewhat go back to normal, take the masks off. We were all scheduling plans, vacations, things like that. And unfortunately, the Delta virus decided to rear its ugly head, and August, we started to trend back up to 733 cases. And I can tell you that as of September 28th, we were at 2,056 cases, so that surge, we're certainly experiencing it right now. Isabella's, Isabella County's highest numbers were November of 2020. There were 1,259 cases. April of 2021 was 1,122 cases. And as of September 28th, just in Isabella County alone, we've had 889 cases. Now, next slide. Hopefully, this works. I wanted to show you a video of something that we at Central Michigan District Health Department put together. We put what's known as a rapid response team together. Again, with six counties, we put two teams together, kind of a north and south, to respond quickly to especially events in schools. So, hopefully, this works.
In Michigan, the future is something we build with our hands. In Michigan, the future is something we build with our hands and our hearts. So, as one of the biggest investors in infrastructure in the state, DTE will spend $2 billion with Michigan companies this year alone, creating thousands of jobs while providing clean, safe, reliable energy, improving lives today and building it even stronger tomorrow, because we're all Michiganders. Nothing stands in our way. DTE. A rapid response team rolling out to assist a local school district after multiple staff members tested positive for COVID.
TV5's Trevor Sahaki explains how these teams help stop the spread.
When Gladwin Community Schools started to see the hint of a COVID outbreak, Superintendent Rick Sebeck got on the phone with the Central Michigan District Health Department. As he explained to TV5 yesterday, they offered him a rapid response team.
So, we were able to, hopefully, without department's help, in the, in the rapid testing this morning, we were able to keep any positive cases in our staff out of the building and keep everybody safe.
The rapid response team was Medical Director Jennifer Morse's idea. They just started a couple months ago.
If there's an increase in cases somewhere or an outbreak occurring somewhere, if the area was agreed to it, we could take our staff out to that area, do on-the-site rapid antigen testing. For people that are positive, we could immediately educate them on how to isolate.
That's what they did at Gladwin. Rolled up in a van like this one, caught several unknown positive cases and vaccinated others. They've mapped out their coverage, too.
We have six counties, so we've kind of set up a northern team and a southern team to save time, travel expenses, and to be able to do it in a timely manner. So, we have multiple people trained in several different offices.
The health department seen the benefits of targeting specific areas.
A lot of other testing events are just testing. And then, you know, later on, they might follow up and do the contact tracing, whereas this, the idea is the sooner you do all of these things, the sooner you can stop the spread.
But with cases rising and more nurses needed in hospitals, the rapid response teams may become less available in the future. Trevor Sahaki, WNEM, TV5.
Thank you. So, again, that's just an idea on, on one of the things that we've been doing to try to assist the community. Again, it gets us out there. We can test, we can vaccinate. Primarily, it's been used with schools so far. We've done it in Gladwin County, Osceola County. I hear in Mount Pleasant, when we saw that an increase in cases, we were able to get the National Guard to come in and do a testing event. And so, again, that's something that's available as well, that, just trying to meet the needs of the community. Next slide, please. One of the things that we started to look at this year, and I, I know the whole mask mandate thing has gotten very political and a lot of feelings on, on both sides, but what we wanted to do is take a look at our cases in five to 18-year-olds and, and take a look at last year's numbers versus this year's numbers. Now, I will say, it's not apples to apples, because we didn't have the Delta variant, which is much more transmissible last year, but these numbers are quite interesting when you look at it. Go ahead, go to the next slide, so that's Aaronack and Clare. If you look at Isabella County, you know, during September 15th through the 21st, we've had 82 cases this year versus zero last year. And September 22nd to the 28th, 52 cases versus five this year, or last year, I'm sorry. So, so again, it's just some numbers that we've been looking at in, in terms of the differences between the school years. Go ahead, go to the next slide. This is infographic that we have been using, and we update on social media weekly, just to give an idea, give the community an idea on where we're at in terms of vaccination. There have been 154,370 vaccines given in our six counties. 30,004 people in Isabella County have had at least one dose over the age of 12. Next slide. Right now, this one is a pretty busy slide, but this is a very important slide as you take a look at numbers. So, this shows all six of our counties and different age groups in terms of vaccination rates. Oh, what's interesting is, you know, Ross Common County is our best county in terms of vaccination. Aaronack County is second. Isabella County actually appears at 48.5% of Isabella County's eligible population over the age of 12, had at least one dose, which ranks second lowest in our six counties. But as you delve into the numbers, what you'll see is the 16 to 19 age group is what is keeping Isabella County's numbers low. And I've had some talks with Nancy Ridley, the city manager, about this, and, and what I think the issue is, is that there is a, a push to get college students registered in terms of the census for the city. And that is the, that is the numbers that the state is using for this. But however, I believe once these students are vaccinated, their vaccination status is going with the, the county of their residence, their permanent residence. So, because if you look at all of the other categories, 16 to 19-year-old age group, or I'm sorry, 12 to 15 age group, Isabella County is the best in our six counties, 30 to 39, 40 to 49, 50 to 64, 65 to 74. All the best in our six counties, yet Isabella County registers as being the second lowest. So, definitely an issue there. I have spoken to the state epidemiologist about that, seeing if there's some way that we could get a correction, but have not heard that yet. So, so overall, I actually think Isabella County numbers are good in all those categories. Like I said, it's up 16 to 19. Obviously, I think you've all heard that Pfizer booster doses are currently available. The FDA Advisory Committee will be meeting October 14th to take a look at Moderna boosters, to look at the data there. October 15th to look at Johnson &amp; Johnson, and then also on October 26th to look at the data for Pfizer submitted for five to 11-year-olds. So, that's all coming in October. So, the way that process works is that FDA Advisory Committee makes the recommendation of the FDA. Then it goes to what's known as the ACIP, which is the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. And once they make the recommendations, that then goes to the CDC, and the CDC ultimately makes the, their final recommendation. That's kind of the process as, as we move forward. Next slide, please. So, one of the things that we always hear about, too, is, you know, how many, how many people hospitalized are unvaccinated or vaccinated, deaths, so forth, like, like that. So, this slide here is, is taken off of state data, which actually shows you 93.8% of all cases are in the unvaccinated, 91.5% of all people hospitalized are unvaccinated, and 92.7% of all deaths are not in unvaccinated. In terms of breakthrough cases, there has been 30,867 breakthrough cases, but that's out of 4,853,633 vaccines given, so that amounts to under 1%, so 0.636%. Next slide. I'll try to wrap this up. Finally, you know, I just wanted to talk about partnerships. You know, it's, it's been a rough year and a half, but we have had amazing partnerships, especially here in Isabella County. This picture shows our first mass vaccination event that was held out at the airport. Couldn't have done it without Isabella County Emergency Management, Isabella County, the city. Just great teamwork to pull that off. Next slide. This picture is from the casino. Again, Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe has been a great partner, and we were out there for, for mass clinics every week. This particular picture, Congressman Mullinare is, is in it. He, he made a visit to, to one of our vaccine sites, and that's some of our staff and volunteers in that picture. Next slide. This is a great overhead shot of the CMU Finch Field House. Again, CMU, tremendous partners, held many, many vaccine events there, and this gives you an idea on the scale of, of what we were doing at Finch Field House. Next slide. And this is a picture, the Lieutenant Governor actually visited Finch Field House, so that's a picture with myself, President Davies, and Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist. I will end there, just by saying, you know, it's been a very long year and a half plus. Our response could not have occurred without these partners, our amazing staff that have just done amazing work during this, and especially our volunteers as well, all made this possible. That is it? Answer any questions if there are.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hall? Commissioner Jelzinski. Hold on one moment, Jerry. They'll get you a microphone.
Thank you. Now, we're dealing with the Delta virus, and you read about new virons across the globe that are coming forward, that mutations continue. Can you look in your crystal ball and think, well, ever going to get out of this mess? I mean, it's impacted our economy, it's impacted our lives. And quite frankly, I think a lot of people are just getting frustrated and mad, because it seems to be no end to it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I, I wish I had a crystal ball. But I would say, I mean, I'm optimistic. I, I think that we, we will get out of this. The issue with variants is the, you know, we have to reach that point where enough people have been vaccinated or enough people have natural immunization from actually getting the virus. Once we reach that level, we'll, we'll stop seeing so many variants coming. At least, that's, that's the thought. And more than likely, you know, what we'll see is this virus get to a point where it's more endemic, you know, where we, we just live with it. It'll be around, but not, not near what we're seeing right now. It'll be low levels. There'll be a potential that you might have to have some type of booster shot every year, similar to the flu shot. Again, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm hopeful that, you know, maybe, maybe within this next year, once we get to next spring, that we'll, we'll kind of be in that, that role where it's just, you know, just something that we deal with, live with, but more endemic, you know, like a seasonal flu kind of thing.
Thank you. And I, I will say that my wife and I got a booster about a week and a half ago, so we're posted child and believing in the vaccinations.
Commissioner Moreno.
Hi, thanks for all the work that the Board of Health does. I've been there, too, and I've seen the great work with you and all your staff and all the partners. When would be a good time to get the flu, flu shot?
Anytime. It's, it's available now, and yeah, any, anytime.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Hope.
Yeah, Mr. Hall, I just, I just want to say, I think you're doing a great job. I got vaccinated early this year at one of those mass sites you were talking about. For as many people, this was at the casino, for as many people as were there, we got in and out, got our shots, came back four weeks later and got the second shot. It, it all worked very smoothly. Harvard, I think, has been able to adapt to something that I don't think any of- Harvard, I think, has been able to adapt to something that I don't think any of us saw coming going to be our reality. So thank you for the job.
Thank you for those comments.
Any other commissioners? Yeah, like Steve, on what our fellow commissioners have said. Also too, you know, besides COVID, this is also the flu season and don't let's not forget in our community to get your flu shots, you can actually get the COVID and the flu shot at the same time. I know I got mine one and one arm, one and the other. So also too, besides COVID though, don't, we have Central Missionary Health Department also does other things. We, several years ago, we were involved, Isabella County was involved in the time of transfer or thing with, with septic and well inspections. So we're, we're involved in that. Also too, with local inspections on local food distributors. I know at one point this summer, I think you were a little concerned that some funding, not funding, but some fees could be taken away, and we had talked about that. Thank goodness that didn't happen. That could have been a big drag on your entity. So again, thank you, and thanks for taking the time out to come in front of us.
I appreciate it. Appreciate this board support and kind of like you say, we're dealing with the pandemic, but the, the, the normal job doesn't go away. At the same time of dealing with COVID, we had the floods in Gladwin, Triple E, and had to deal with spraying for mosquitoes, all that type of stuff. So but I do appreciate the support of this board and, and thank you, Margaret, for, for all that you've done and enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
It's been my pleasure, Steve. Thank you very much.
Okay, that'll bring us on to appointments to boards and commissions, which we have nothing. Item number seven, committee works. First up, Finance and Administration Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, consider ratifying and placing on file the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one invoice list in the amount of two hundred and two thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and six cents. The September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one invoice list in the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and five dollars and fifty cents. And the adjustment list stated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So on that first list, we have our consumer energy payments, our monthly bills for the administration building, the court, and the sheriff's office jail. We have nine thousand two hundred and twenty dollars to election source for the August primary testing. And we have fifty percent down on our truck scale for the MRF, money which came from the two percent grant. And a two thousand twenty-one police interceptor from Crapal Ford for the Sheriff's Department. And then moving on to the next list, we have fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars to Manor Testarian PC, our August financial services. Then we have a couple restitution payments. Mission Creek debt payment for the drains in the amount of two hundred thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Start excavating, little work on Upton drain repairs, and then watch guard video, two invoices. One for body worn cameras project and another for the in-car video project, both to the Sheriff's Department. And then on the adjustment list, we have the invoices that we always see from Gordon Food Services, which we pay early, get early payment discount. And then an invoice decrease due to incorrect mileage rate, a small error there. Invoice added payments. Had to re, accompany a request for evaluation, the MERS. Consumers Energy invoice added, again, to avoid a late payment. So consumers were also paying early to avoid late payments. And then an invoice voided because the vendor misbuild, and that was Central Square Technologies down at the bottom. So any of the commissioners have any questions on the two invoice lists or the adjustment list? Okay, hearing nothing, those items will move forward to tonight's agenda.
Our second business item is consider approving the agreement with Secure Alarm Systems Incorporated for the period of October first, two thousand twenty-one through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two for the security at the trial court, sheriff's office, county building, and commission on aging in the amount of forty-four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and authorize the board chair to sign the same. Go ahead, Michelle.
This is my normal come to you and approve this contract for the year. They have done, they've been with us since two thousand and nine and have done a wonderful job. And the price this year did not go up whatsoever. They kept it the same for whatever reason, which I was very happy when I worked with them on it. And as I said, their service has been outstanding. We have an issue with the camera. I call them, they come, they set up an appointment. Sometimes parts take a little longer to get, but they're, they are trying to fix it. I'm very happy with this company as our security team.
Are there any other questions for Michelle?
I just noticed this looking at the financial summary, kind of where the cost would go, and you can see, you know, just looking at how much the, the agreements go towards the jail and the courthouse, two areas that certainly need a higher end of security and cameras and everything like that. So and again, it doesn't seem to add, I think you said it doesn't add anything. So and we've seen this through the years, kind of like that theme, that song goes through the years. It's, you know, it's kind of, it hasn't changed anything. So that's all I have, Commissioner Jowzinski.
Any other comments or questions? And this will move forward to tonight's meeting.
Okay, item number three, consider approving the agreement with Secure Alarm Systems Incorporated for the period October first, two thousand twenty-one through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two for the security at the Public Defender's Office in the amount of three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and authorize the board chair to sign the same. And this is the agreement we have with Public Defender's Office, different agreement because that building came online at a different time than the other, the other buildings. And that, which does help with auditing for the MIDC grant. And Michelle, is there anything you want to add?
No, just said, this does cover readers for all the doors as well. So it gives us a history if we ever need to know who's been in, where, when. And that's pretty important in some of the ways you investigate things, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Hope?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick to, to the board members, I know we brought it up in committee, but Steve and Terry especially, when you became a county commissioner, I should, I should have asked Margaret, she's probably going to kick me. Make sure you have your little card to come in the building if you deem to do it afterwards. I think I've used it, I'm going to say twice, but I can't remember the second time. I did use it this year to bypass the front door, having to walk all the way around. I was lazy and they said, I think Nicole's one actually told me that. Make sure you bring your key cat so you don't have to do that. It's a great idea. So anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments on that? All right, hearing nothing further, that item will move forward to tonight's agenda.
The fourth and final item for the Finance and Administration Committee is consider approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two agreement for extension services between Isabella County and Michigan State University Extension in the amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and authorize the board chair to sign the same. I see Sherry's on, on the screen. Sherry, would you like to present your budget requests?
Sure, thank you. What you have in front of you is the memorandum of agreement between extension services and the county, and this is the agreement that we look at and renegotiate every year. Nothing really has changed in it. There is a two percent increase this year that we're asking for. And the agreement includes the assessment for extension services, a full-time secretary and a full-time 4H coordinator. That's basically what that one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars covers. And that, of course, is matched with the rest of the staff with state and federal funding. That includes our food and nutrition program instructor, our farm stress educator, egg educator, and our food safety educator in the office.
I serve on the District Six Advisory Board for MSUE, and I, I think those advisory boards are great because we get to learn about the programs being offered by extension. But also I think extension learns from the people sitting there to make sure that their programs remain relevant, and they have wonderful programs. You think about the egg, egg programs that serve our agricultural communities. You think about 4H. You know, one of the new programs is a farm stress program that deals with the farm families that are having to deal with high costs of equipment, weather catastrophes on crops and, and the like. There's that stress, and so it's trying to work kind of in a manner to make sure that the stress doesn't get to the point where people are considering suicide or some other drastic measure. There's nutrition programs, just so many wonderful programs. This is really a bargain for the county. And I think two percent certainly is a very reasonable amount of increase. Are there any other comments or questions for Sherry?
I'll just comment that, like it says in the staff report, there's a two percent increase over last year, but the MSU extension has had to increase staff compensation like everyone else to stay competitive. But they've shouldered most of that burden internally. So I appreciate that.
If there's nothing else, we'll move this forward to tonight's regular meeting.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Chairman, that completes the work of the Finance Administration Committee.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, Criminal Justice and County Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item. That is consider approving amendment number one between the state and Michigan Department of Health and Services, Isabelle County, extending the cooperative reimbursement program. The CRP agreement through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the board chair to sign the same. This is agreement we entered about five years ago. It's a five-year grant program. It expires in September thirtieth, twenty-one. Basically, because of COVID-19, they decided then the program for two years. So this is amendment to the current contract to move it forward. So I guess we have Court Administrator Curtis here. If she would like to comment on this, she's more than welcome. So Administrator Curtis?
Hi, thank you. I just want to point out one thing that you brought up in the committee meeting, one of you did, is that for twenty twenty-two fiscal year, it is less, the grant amount is less, or the reimbursement amount, I should say, because we have had changes in personnel since the original agreement was entered. Meaning that now we have people who are lower on the pay step scale, so our personnel costs are less. So that will go back up over the next couple of years, but that is why there is a decrease. Otherwise, this is a longstanding reimbursement for front of the court services, particularly for child support collections and enforcement.
Okay, is there any more questions on that? Seeing Donald will move this forward to tonight's meeting. And Mr. Chairman, that completes the work of Criminal Justice and County Affairs Committee.
Thank you. Next up, Human Resources and Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item is consider approving the contract between Lamar Advertising and Isabella County in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for electronic billboard advertising and authorize the board chair to sign the same. We have Ian here to, Ian Walsh to explain this item. Could you do that, please, Ian?
Thank you, Chairman. The Lamar contract is continuing from our existing contract. We have those billboards already up. This is part of the County Veteran Service Fund grant that was already approved, and that contract has already been returned to the state of Michigan. Hopefully, we'll get, we'll get our money soon and continue that. So there's no interruption in service, and obviously these billboards hopefully will continue to help notify veterans and eligible beneficiaries to come in and apply for benefits. Anybody have any questions?
One on Mission and one on Pickard, right?
That's correct. Yep.
Any questions or comments at this time from other commissioners? Being none, this will be on our evening agenda.
Thank you.
Item two, consider approving the Regional Seven Area Agency on Aging contractual agreement with Isabelle County and other required documents for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and authorize the board chair to sign this. We have Jennifer Crocker.
Hello there. So before you, it's our fiscal year twenty-two agreement between Isabella County Commission on Aging and the Region Seven Area Agency on Aging, and the amount is two hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars. And this program reimburses the Commission on Aging for both our nutrition and our, for both our nutrition and our in-home services programs, our home delivered meals, our congregant meals, and then all of our in-home programs that we do provide to the Commission on Aging. And this is approximately twenty-one percent of the total funding for both of those two programs. This will also mark the forty-ninth consecutive year of funding between our two organizations, which I think is really awesome. So hope that you will continue to support us with this funding.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move this forward to tonight's meeting. Okay. Our next item is consider approving the consulting agreement between Isabella County Resource Systems Group Incorporated for Isabella Wind Project Post-Construction Sound Study and authorize the board chair to sign the same. We have Tim Neofort, Community Development Director, to give us some more information on this item. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. This is part of the wind turbine project, one of the last steps in the wind turbine project. As most of you are aware, the approvals from the Planning Commission in twenty nineteen, yes, in twenty nineteen and in twenty twenty on the site plan review were conditional approvals. One of the items left to consider is Section twelve oh five QQ, number twenty-eight, which is a post-construction sound study. We have went out for proposal with five companies. They were Acoustics by Design out of Grand Rapids, Robert Anderson Group out of Lansing, Hankard Environmental out of Wisconsin, Ken Kaliski of RSG out of Vermont, and Robert O'Neil of Absalon. We chose these five to seek proposals from based on the fact that they were some of the only sound acoustic professionals that do this type of work with wind turbines. We did receive three proposals back in August, and they were from Acoustics by Design, Hankard Environmental, and Ken Kaliski of RSG. After review of those applications, it was recommended by Spicer Group, our consultant, project consultant, that we move forward with the Ken Kaliski of RSG proposal. That proposal was presented to the Planning Commission on September, on September ninth, and the Planning Commission moved forward to recommend that we use Ken Kaliski of RSG. Therefore, we're bringing this back in front of you tonight for approval and signatures. The contract was drafted by the project attorney, Mr. Fahey, for this proposal.
Anyone have any questions or comments at this time about that?
Tim, I'd just say I appreciate the detail of this report. You really laid everything out there, but I have a question. When we looked at the ordinance, I remember the sound desk But, uh, I have a question. When we looked at the ordinance, I remember the, the sound decibels had to be under a certain limit and adjoining property. Do you remember what that?
Yeah, it was an L fifty. So it had to be under fifty decibels, um, at the, uh, non-participating property line. Um, there was a staff report, which is referred to in here as well, that came from Spicer Group at the beginning of the process. And basically that staff report was a, uh, kind of a framework structure for how we would prepare and what we would look for in a post-construction sound study. And that was also included as part of the proposal. And it was required piece of the proposal because we wanted to make sure that they were meeting our framework that we were looking for. But that was an L fifty standard.
Yeah. Okay. So fifty decibels is comparable to?
Fifty decibels is, um, a, a, a refrigerator running in the house, uh, low, low noise levels. Um, we, you know, we have had some complaints, uh, since the project has been up and running. Um, many of our complaints have been, uh, more radio tower, uh, interception with TV. Um, and that, uh, my understanding, I had a meeting with Dr. Buddha of DTE, um, about a week and a half or two weeks ago. And, um, uh, that's just a really slow process, unfortunately, right now because of the way the economy chain isn't moving antennas of that quality in. But DTE is fixing those problems. Uh, the other problems that we did incur were a few shadow flicker problems. Um, and DTE moved to, um, um, eliminate all the shadow flicker issues by basically just shutting them off. I believe they're working towards a, um, GE support, um, sundial or sundisk, um, for each one of the turbines that will determine if there's sun on it or not, to tell it to shut down if it's going to create shadow flicker. So we haven't had a whole lot of those. And only a couple of complaints, um, really on noise, and one of them is sort of outstanding. I went out about two or three weeks ago, um, because this was a repetitive complaint coming in that it was very noisy, very loud. Um, I took a handheld, um, decibel reader, which I know is not the most scientific, um, of means, but it at least would give me some sort of baselines in where we were. Um, and I, I was struggling. I was stretching my ear as far as I could to try to hear, um, that noise. I could hear some creaking, you know, I could hear some, uh, uh, bending of those fiberglass blades. But I wasn't hearing, uh, loud, um, loud sustained noises of any sort. All the readings that we had and we tested, I think, um, oh, probably six different locations, um, we tested for a couple of minutes and we did that at nine o'clock in the morning. And then we went back at one o'clock in the afternoon and tested. And our readings were relatively comparable. Winds came up in the afternoon a little bit, but all the sites kind of came up a little bit in decibel. But everybody was within. So, you know, this study is post-construction sound study is really going to give us a baseline, uh, to move forward within the community to know, one, they're in compliance, um, and two, to, uh, set that baseline to ensure compliance into the future.
Thank you. Uh, my other question is about the lights. And I remember at the time, uh, there's a technology that will, uh, turn those lights off so that they only come on when there's aircraft in the area. And at, at the time, it was kind of experimental, yeah? Has there been any movement on that? You know, has that become more of a common technology or not so much?
It is, it's, it's called Aircraft Detection Lighting System. It's ADLS. Um, it was approved, um, back in twenty seventeen by the FAA as a usable, um, source for, uh, turbine projects. So it is something that, um, is not, has not been, uh, uh, used across the United States in many, you know, capacities. However, um, it is something that is approved by the FAA. And I don't know that the FAA would approve something that they would, you know, be too worried about, uh, in the long run. But, um, you know, that would take an ordinance change for us, and that would not impact this current project, unfortunately. Because, you know, this project is approved under the state, you know, standards that were of the ordinance at time. But, you know, moving forward, I can take a look and, and, and see and maybe talk a little bit with DTE and some of their other projects and things that are going on to see if any communities are moving towards that or if they're working towards, you know, that type of a solution.
Right. Uh, I appreciate that. I, I did hear one person complain about why if they could just do something about the lights flashing all the time.
Yeah.
Understandable.
Yep. I think, I think the main, you know, the main issues with these all along have been lights, shadow flicker and noise. I mean, those are the three components that are really, um, um, give turbines sort of that bad rap. Um, and I think there's technology as, as, uh, we continue to evolve with regard to the technology. There are things like the sundials or the sundisks that they're utilizing. That's going to pretty much solve that, uh, shadow flicker issue. Um, you know, noise is always going to be there, but they are doing things on the backsides of blades and building these, um, almost like a comb on the backside of the blade that kind of breaks up the sound and the, and the force going past it, which eliminates some of the noise. So there are some things that are happening, I think, in the technology that moving forward will, uh, will be better with regard to those three, uh, aspects of a turbine project.
Thank you. Good questions. I, I, I get these questions all the time. I'm out in the middle of it. Appreciate the thorough report that you did. Yeah, that's the one thing going forward is the blinking lights. Uh, the sound, being in the appliance business, uh, the, uh, decibels. You can hear, I mean, I've got one right by my way. You can hear them. Uh, very, very, it's, it's a soft, you don't get that consistent.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions on this item? Okay, this will go to our evening meeting agenda for action. Okay. Item number four, consider approving the property access agreement between brine well plugging and by the Dow Chemical Company and authorize the board chair to sign this thing. Okay, this was a, uh, report given to us.
Yep. Um, so this is, this is a project which, um, was handed down, um, to me by, um, Mr. McAvoy back, I believe it was in February, maybe six months ago now. Um, and it was, uh, a project that Dell, uh, I'm sorry, Dow Corporation and, um, uh, uh, the Eagle, um, out of the State of Michigan, the Environmental Great Lakes and, uh, Energy Department, were working to close, uh, open brine wells. Um, it's not something that they're just looking here in, um, in Isabella County at. They're looking kind of in this mid, uh, um, central area. I think there's a hundred and fifty or so open brine wells, uh, that they're looking to, uh, uh, close up. So, um, in this process, I met with, uh, some, um, of the contacts there with, uh, Mr. Signum, with ACOM, who is a sister company of the Dow Chemical Company. And, um, they presented me with a, a well that happened to be on county property. Um, the property is located, uh, the old rail bed, which is kind of, uh, in the southeast corner of our MURF. So if you pull into the MURF straight back, there's an old rail system that used to run through there. And it kind of runs up to the northeast, um, from the MURF's facility. And it kind of dead ends at the Viaduct where industrial drive and river drive, river road come in together and they make that T. Um, brought, oh, maybe a hundred and fifty yards in from there on the north side of that, that, uh, parcel of land, uh, is, is a well. Um, they, uh, came and they wanted access to kind of dig around because they had some old historic, uh, information about wells. I went out there, I met with them, uh, they kind of poked around and they did find the actual well out there. Um, so what they did was they pulled an access agreement to come in and close that well. Um, and in that access agreement, um, that we have in front of you tonight, um, there is a compensation for the county. Uh, there's providing access to Eagle for, um, uh, inspections to ensure that this is closed up properly, um, a work plan and the restoration, and then other legally binding, uh, information. I did speak with, um, uh, Tim Carone, Corporate Counsel, and had him review this. The only location that he had any issue with, um, was in our work plan. We left out, uh, the requirement for a soil erosion permit, soil erosion, sedimentation control permit. Um, so we did add that to the document. It is currently in there. And it has been, um, signed, um, on Dow's behalf at this point. I think they'd like to get started this, uh, yet this year, um, and get this thing, uh, closed up. Um, so we do have a signed document, which I believe I gave to Jessica. I don't have it in front of me. Um, but, uh, that's where we are. They just basically were looking for a signed, um, access agreement document, um, by the board. This is no cost, this is, I'm sorry, this is no cost to the county. Uh, Dow is incurring all the costs on this project and actually compensating us four thousand dollars, uh, for allowing their access.
Yeah, that definitely looks like something move forward, take care of. But you have any other questions? Um, so we'll move this forward to a regular meeting.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, our last item this afternoon is consider adopting Isabella County Board of Commissioners Resolution Number twenty-one dash one zero dash oh one. Community Mental Health for Central Michigan and authorize the board chair to sign the same. The viewers and folks out here, remember last week, we were asked to do this at a presentation from the Community Mental Health of Central Michigan that came here and, uh, pointed out to us the, uh, some of the things that are going on in Lansing regarding changes to the way community mental health does their job. So, uh, they did, since then, provide us with the resolution, which is quite lengthy. I will read it, so people know what we're talking about, okay? There goes. Isabella County Board of Commissioners Resolution twenty-one dash one zero dash oh one. Whereas Community Mental Health for Central Michigan, a mental health authority that has served for more than fifty years as a public mental health and intellectual developmental disability service provider for Claire Gladwin, Isabella, Acosta, Midland, and Osceola Counties, and has served over ten thousand residents in FY twenty. And whereas CMHCM was created by the Isabella County Board of Commissioners along with five participating county boards of commissioners as duly authorized under the Community Mental Health Act of nineteen sixty-three. And whereas CMHCM is governed by a board of directors seated by the Isabella County Board of Commissioners along with five participating county boards of commissioners appointed according to state law to include county commissioners, invested citizens, and persons with living, lived experiences from each of the local communities. And whereas every year, thousands of individuals and their families across Central Michigan depend on the public behavioral health system for daily and in some cases lifelong support and services. And whereas Michigan's community mental health system has pioneered every mental health innovation, evidence-based and promising practice that are not available outside of the system. It has delivered these effectively and efficiency, efficiently benefiting its customers and taxpayers. Some examples include meeting or exceeding state-established performance standards for decades around timeliness of access, speed of crisis intervention, follow-up from inpatient care, from inpatient care, and low inpatient readmission rates. Providing one of the nation's most comprehensive array of community-based services resulting in a dramatic increase in access to care for low-income Michiganders, ranking number six in the country for access to care for adults, saving over five billion dollars from nineteen ninety-seven through two thousand and fifteen, and extrapolated to over twelve billion through twenty twenty-four through the use of person-centered planning and comprehensive care management. The total state overhead payment to the public managed care system is six point oh two percent compared to the twenty-one percent paid to private health plans resulting in the savings of four point seven billion dollars since nineteen ninety-seven. This means that ninety-four dollars of every hundred dollars provided to the CMH system is used for healthcare compared with only seventy-nine of a hundred dollars from private providers. This difference is equivalent to four hundred and fifty million diverted dollars diverted for mental health care of Michigan, uh, Michiganders. And whereas Isabella County Board of Commissioners opposes any behavioral health redesign that harms the state and county partnership for community mental health and related Medicaid's safety net services. Additionally, we believe that any behavioral health redesign must maintain the efficiency, responsiveness, and integrity of the community-based behavioral health systems. And whereas recent proposals in the House and Senate fundamentally change the public behavioral health system and will harm those served by the system. The Isabella County Board of Commissioners opposes those proposals because public oversight, governments, governance, operations, and accountability of the Medicaid benefit would be ended. Beneficiaries would lose local access for input into the design and operation of their Medicaid services and support systems. Current proposals for redesign are not based on performance metrics related to the positive outcomes, effectiveness, and efficiency measures associated with the current public system. The proposals offer no clear statement about the problems that the Senate or House are attempting to address or solve. The proposed bills ignore the views expressed by those who would be directly affected by these changes. These bills ignore the comprehensive set of recommendations made by a large and diverse set of stakeholders who have the most to gain or lose from changes to the system and are counter to the findings captured in section two nine eight, Work Group Final Report. And whereas, instead of damaging the public behavioral system through ill-advised proposals, recent innovations fostered by the public behavioral health system should be supported. The Isabella County Board of Commissioners have support and asks our legislature and executive branch leaders to support local primary and behavioral health integration, infrastructure, and care coordination at the point of delivery service to include certified community behavioral health clinics, behavioral health homes, opioid health homes. And whereas the public behavioral health system is a safety net system for our state's most vulnerable individuals, we believe strongly that the public safety net behavioral health system must remain public and government's accountability and funding and operation. We believe strongly that the beneficiaries have immediate virtual and in-person access to their board member representatives in the community and to the whole board of directors through participation in local board meetings under the Open Meetings Act. Recent proposals by some members of the Michigan Senate and House eliminate these key features of the behavioral health system. We stand united in opposing these proposals. And whereas the public behavioral health system carries out its responsibilities to every citizen in the state by seeking and serving persons with the greatest, most severe, and most persistent needs and vulnerabilities without regard to whether this, there, there is risk or loss, low or no return on investment, or other non-person-centered motivations. The public system appropriately shares these risks with the state and is demonstrably and significantly more efficient at moving more taxpayer money into services not in administration, infrastructure, or profits. And whereas the behavioral health safety net has ensured continued service and support to individuals, families, communities, workforce members, and provider organizations in every possible way before and throughout the pandemic period, including tens of millions of dollars in provider stabilization and direct care worker support in the CMH region alone. The House and Senate proposals, as they currently stand, both eliminate Michigan's P I H Ps and threaten the CMU H's ability to deliver services and supports to the most vulnerable individuals in our state and shift responsibility for managing public services and support to private health plans in the Senate and administrative service organizations in the House and to the state, effectively damaging Isabella County level oversight and control. The premise of these proposals appears to prefer that privatization in the Senate and state certification house are better than local access, local control, local accountability, co- collaborative regional local management, shared resources, and local oversight. We stand united in opposition to these proposals and therefore be it resolved that we request that our policymaking representatives support and proven strengthen the public behavioral health safety net system and that you support improvements in the delivery of publicly governed, publicly governed, publicly accountable, publicly operated, regional, and community-based systems, investing in and expanding initiatives that are proven to improve citizen access, beneficiary engagement, individual and population health, behavioral well-being, resiliency, quality of life, and community benefit betterment such as those mentioned above. These are among the daily, weekly, yearly accomplishments of the public system that would be destroyed by pursuing those new legislative proposals. Okay, um, what we have here is there's a couple of bills that started in this, uh, Michigan Senate, and they've been given committee hearings, and, uh, they're moving forward. These bills, and this tendency has not the first time that this has happened. There's been, uh, attempts to privatize the system. And you can realize that the main thing that we're we're, some of the main things we're concerned about is local control and spending more of the money for people instead of for profit or anything else, administration costs. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to say, Commissioner Hope?
Yeah, thank you. I thought that was a long one to get through. I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I agree with everything you said on there. You covered it very well. I'll just say that I sit on the CMHCM board. It is run by the county commissioners and the community representatives that we appoint. We have two for Isabella County, and they're, they're very dedicated people to take that kind of local control away and just hand it to a private entity is worrisome. And Senator Sherkey has said that this is one of his main priorities that he wants to get done, and he's term limited. He's said this is what he wants to do. The governor hasn't given us any indication that she'll veto it, so we're a little worried about, about that. This was a hot topic at the Met Conference that Commissioner Horton and I were at last week, but it really does represent a wholesale restructuring of the whole system and turning it over to the private enterprise and, and losing that local control of it that we have. We heard at the last board meeting from our Isabella County Program Director, Jen McNally, and CMHCM Director John Obermusik about all the programming that they do. And I'd be worried about losing some of that, you know, the jail diversion program, the youth intervention. They have a twenty-four-seven crisis team that'll respond to mental health crises anytime, anywhere. I worry about if a private company would be as concerned about some of that programming. But in MAC has strongly opposed these. In fact, they've said in a legislative update that this would shift administration of Medicaid mental health services to private health plans through the creation of specialty integrated plans. MAC has long opposed this shift to a private health plans and supports local governance and accountability rooted in the mental health code. This structure allows partnerships across county-based services, including responding to those who come in contact with the county sheriff department and/or jail, local court system, juvenile justice systems, health department, or local hospital, and also they do a lot of work in the schools, trying to reach youth that might be at risk, trying to identify and reach those, those kids. So this is, this is an important resolution and important message to send to Lansing. Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is like a legislative Dracula that keeps popping around to suck the lifeblood out of the public mental health system. You know, if there was a plan that shows that a change is warranted because better services would be an outcome, that's fine, but it seems like the only thing that's gonna come out of this is someone's gonna gain some money, and maybe the state might lose some budgetary cost. I suspect that's what's behind all this. I hope if we adopt this resolution, it doesn't say anything here, but that we provide copies to our local senate and house reps, that we send it to the leader of the senate and house of representatives, that we provide a copy to the community mental health and a copy to, to MAC so they can have that to disseminate the resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a very important program in the sense of if you've ever had anybody on Medicaid, whether it be short-term, long-term, these are funds that they don't have a lot of funding anyway, and then to take just a small percentage away, and it's not a small percentage that we're looking. I think it's something we, we really do need to adapt.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't several years ago, I think we did the same resolution and very similar than as commissioners, we, we did the same one. For me, given my background as a pharmacist and dealing a lot with the local mental health patients in this community, that's what I'm focused on is the patient. The money, you know, sometimes cheaper isn't always better, and I think that to me is the scary part is I've seen it with prescription drugs. They went to managed care and some of the managed health plans, and that's just, it wiped out some pharmacies because their reimbursement was so low, and they hid, they took some hidden dollars and kept some hidden dollars, kind of a PBM pharmacy benefit management game that was played, and they may have showed some savings to the state, but they also caused a lot of harm. And I think I see this happening too is that the mental health patients need it, for lack of a better term, a touch, a hands-on approach. And I think this is the best way is to have local involvement and not being subject to a managed care, not having to worry about calling up for prior authorization, you know, picking up a phone and saying, hey, I got a patient here, what can you do? And, you know, you're waiting on hold for thirty-five minutes to somebody in Idaho or something like that you're waiting to talk to. So again, this to me is just rehashing what we saw two years ago, putting a different date on it. I mean, I'm, this is not a good idea, I don't think, and that's my opinion. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions or statements? I do note that during the committee hearings, there's been plenty of disapproval of this and input saying this would be a bad thing. It just keeps coming chugging through though. You got to always be vigilant for these kind of things, I would say. I'm looking to be, this will be on the, tonight's agenda. That concludes the work of the Human Resources and Public Works Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Next up, you know, Government Affairs, which we have no action. We have nothing under Administrator Controller Reports. We have no action under unfinished business. That brings us into new business, which we have two items. Chairman Hope, would you mind, excuse me, Vice Chairman Hope, would you mind introducing item A, please?
Item A is consider adopting Isabella County Board of Commissioners Resolution Number twenty-one dash ten dash zero-two Register of Deeds Karen R. Jackson, two thousand and twenty-one Register of the Year, and authorize the board chair to sign the same. And the resolution reads, whereas Isabella County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and recognize Isabella County Register of Deeds Karen R. Jackson, and whereas Karen began her career in public service more than thirty-three years ago in the Calcasas County Register of Deeds, and whereas her service sparked a passion for finding solutions to meet the community's property needs, and whereas Karen's passion continued in her distinguished service with the Isabella County Register of Deeds where she became Chief Register of Deeds in the fall of two thousand and five, and was duly elected to the office of the Isabella County Register of Deeds in two thousand and thirteen, and whereas Karen became a member of the Michigan Association of Register of Deeds in two thousand and six, serving on the Registration Committee, Budget Committee, Site Committee, and serving as its treasurer since two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Karen is also a member of the Property Records Industry Association and is active in the United County Officers Association, serving as UCOA Treasurer since two thousand and fourteen, and receiving her certified county officer designation in two thousand and eighteen. And whereas Karen's depth of service now includes execution of duties as Isabella County Remonumentation Administrator, Passport Processing Agent, Notary Public, Certified Parliamentarian, Community Emergency Response Team Member, and Chairperson of the County's Fund Committee. And whereas Karen has provided outstanding leadership to the county and to her colleagues throughout her many roles, and recently was selected as the Michigan Association of Register of Deeds, two thousand and twenty-one Register of the Year, and whereas Karen is the supportive wife of Stephen, the loving mother of Julie, Amber, and Kimberly, the doting grandmother of Emily, Katie, Belle, and Vaughn, and the adoring great-grandmother of Dawson and Giovanni, and therefore let it be resolved that the Isabella County Board of Commissioners hereby honors and recognizes the Isabella County Register of Deeds Karen R. Jackson for her designation as the two thousand and twenty-one Register of the Year, and thanks her for her selfless, faithful, and unwavering service.
All right, well, thank you. That will move forward to this evening, and we'll have a, I'm sure that will be motioned and supported and okayed by the Board of Commissioners, a seven-zero vote. We'll have something, a little thing this evening to do, a presentation this evening, so. Thank you. Next up, item number B, Commissioner Jowzinski, if you want my reading this one, please.
Consider, consider approving reimbursement to townships and city of Mount Pleasant for special election nine-one-one surcharge renewal costs for those entities that provided a bill for election workers, postage, and absentee voting AV supplies in the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. I'll kind of introduce this because I've been kind of an outspoken person that feels that we should, we should look at reimbursing those election entities. I know we can come up with reasons not to do it, but we pride ourselves of being good partners with local government. And just because it's not a statutory requirement not to do it, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it. I think it's fair. I've heard from three of my townships, two of which I know it's a financial hardship because they're not well-heeled townships. We did hear from Union Township, that seems to be one way or the other on it, but I think it's the right thing to do, and I will be voting in, in support of that at tonight's meeting. And Mindy, I know, has put out a report showing the things, the costs that have already been picked up, and some of those costs are beyond the requirements of her office that she's picked up for, for the townships in the city. But there still remains a significant cost back to the townships. I guess by township, it's not a huge cost, but again, for some of the townships, it is a cost that they have to shoulder. And again, just because we don't have a statutory requirement, doesn't mean we should pass those, pass on reimbursing those costs.
I won't say anything else right now, but I'm sure there's other comments as we go around the, certainly commissioners. Anybody want to have a, we'll start, Commissioner Moreno, do you have anything to add, since this is part of a discussion item?
No, I agree that they should be reimbursed. I just have a question about what you sent out about deadlines. What, what's the implication there? Because it seemed like the city had one that was past the deadline.
Well, I think in regards to the, the county clerk had sent out not only emails, but also had conversations, and for our committee, she asked to have a deadline put in so we could get a report, and she could present it to the Finance and Administration Committee. And that was done. Five, I think five or six townships did not bother, did not submit a statement at committee. We ended up looking at three items for reimbursement. And as to the ones who didn't submit anything, there was two schools of thought. One, they didn't, either A, they didn't feel it was necessary to submit because they didn't feel that the county should pay. That was one thought. Another thought is that they just didn't submit, and they missed the deadline. And either way, I know, I don't, I don't want to sound critical, but if somebody presents and say, hey, send some money in, I think it behooves you to, excuse me, not send some money in, but send a report in, I think it behooves you to do that. And I, and I think that's why that was done that way. So that answered your question why there, but there, I believe the entities that did not report certainly had plenty of knowledge. That wasn't something that they found out a day ahead of time, and couldn't get it in. They had plenty of knowledge and plenty of time to do so. They just didn't do it, so.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things on this. I said in committee that I probably would not be in support of this. This is one of those things I can see both sides. A couple of things, there were five or six townships that did not submit anything, and we, I guess we don't know why they didn't. I would also point out that our clerk's office spent twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars on testing and programming to eliminate undue financial burden on the townships that we don't have to do, but our, our clerk's office did. And the other thing I would say is that nine-one-one does benefit everyone in the, in the county. All that being said, on the other hand, it was on the August ballot because we made a mistake. It should have been on the May ballot when there were other things on the ballot. So a lot of these townships had to do an election that they would not otherwise have had to do. So I can see both sides, and I honestly, at this point, am undecided on it.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Angler? I'm sorry, Commissioner Hudsonson, I was gonna work around here. Commissioner Hudsonson?
You know, I know this isn't life and death here, but I'm just thinking as a good faith operator, I would be supportive.
Go back to the Commissioner Angler.
Okay, I, I find I'm supporting this. You know, it's not only just the money, some of these townships do not have full staff, so the time to go in to set this before the election, they have to get up Saturday or Sunday to clerk to do this. And I don't see it setting the precedent. Hopefully it doesn't. Kind of a mistake, so I hope this is a one-time deal and will never happen again. I said mistakes happen and, in life, but I don't see it. Have to do this all the time, but I hope it never happens again, so. I will support this. I think it's a good faith. I said we demand that mid-Michigan's gonna have a special election, they pay for it, so. And our partners in government, the township, I think we should support that, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Swinney.
I think I'll also support this tonight. I just feel like it's, Jerry said, Commissioner Jowzinski said, we're gonna be good partners with our townships, and obviously we represent them, their constituents, and they've expressed a need for the reimbursement. And I think that it's not a stretch for us to own up to a little bit of responsibility and pay eighteen thousand. I do appreciate Mindy Lux going out of her way, paying for extra items for them and telling them, providing them with Zoom meetings on what needs to be presented and when in that support, so that's a lot of extra time for, for that group.
Vice Chairman Hope, you went out of, you went out of turn, but we'll let you speak again. I'm just kidding. You have, you have anything that, you have anything you want to add or supplement or anything like that?
I do not.
Okay. I'm just gonna back up real quick. I'd like to thank our county clerk. I know this has not been an easy subject for her. We've been talking back and forth in regards to this for some time. She has close, she's close with all the township clerks and the city clerks, and she's had to walk a fine line here. My opinion on this is, is several things. I agree with Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hope, that there, you can look at two sides of this and make an argument on either side, depending on which way you fall. I tend to fall on the side of, my understanding is that the townships and the city are responsible putting on up to three elections, and they're to budget for the three elections. And whether or not they budget for them, I guess that's their, that's their issue, whether they want to roll the dice and not put it in their budget and not have it there, and potentially have this problem coming up short or having to scramble and find the funds for it. I don't think that's really an issue. I don't think any of the townships have come and said, we're gonna, we're gonna have to cut something. You look at some of the, I won't say it, but you look at some of the fund balances, I think they're safe to, you know, same with the county. The county could absorb this. This is not the issue on that. Where I'm going with this, though, is I don't really care why, why a special election took place, is that it could happen sometimes, the county could sit there and look at whether, what election or what timeframe do you want to join something. Maybe in this case, we're the only thing on the ballot in August. We're the only issue, and we won nine, not one, but it passed ninety-one to nine roughly, tremendous support. If you were to get on in the spring or you were to get on in the fall... If you were to get on in the spring or you were to get on in the fall and mixed issues, multiple issues, you may not get that kind of support. So what if in the future, we decide to hold something and try to be the only thing on the ballot like we were this year? What if next year in August, we look at something and say, and I'll throw an example out and this very well could come in front of the board, is, uh, I may be speaking out of turn, but I'm gonna say it anyway. In, in determining, determining the county seat, let's use that as an example. Two-thirds resolution, the state constitution allows two-thirds resolution by this Board of Commissioners to pass a resolution change or changing or amending what the county seat is. After the Board of Commissioners by two-thirds resolution passes it, it then goes to the ref, rent of reference to the voters. I think it would stand a much better chance of passing if next year, if the only thing, of course, next year won't be the only thing in the obvious. You know, I, that's a bad analogy, but let's say what's happening this year. We would be well-served if it been on that ballot for August if we had that in place. To be the only thing to explain to the citizens why that would be necessary. So again, I, I see this as posturing for the future and giving up that. Another statement I feel strongly about is what if we have another issue down the road, county-related? And I think, um, one of the arguments was, will the schools do it? But they're set, they're mandated. That's a state statute that they're responsible for reimbursing. County's not mandated to reimburse. And what if in the future, we have a county election for something county-related and all of a sudden we start getting bills for percentages of, from the township? So we just force to reimburse the townships for the percentages on their elections? So that's where I'm going with this. This opens up a dangerous slippery slope, as I say, is eighteen thousand dollars, give or take. I mean, look, for example, we got something last minute today coming in for, for an added funding. Where's it gonna end? What if five, or five of the other township decided, well, why can't we be included? Let's sue the county or let's do something else. Where's it gonna end? Are we, are, are we gonna, it's gonna say, okay, she's coming late? We, we don't even have a set policy in place. The committee decided on three items. For reimbursement, um, cost of election workers postseason AV supplies. That wasn't everything that was submitted. Uh, there was, there was, you could have doubled or tripled the bill or roughly. Those were just pulled out because I think commissioners asked. So I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we should slide down. I don't think we should go down this road. Is it, is it, and I'm not looking at whether the county was an error, but I'm looking at going forward and if we ever want to do this, we want to position ourselves. And again, I wouldn't want to see this come up if we want to take, let's say, for instance, we were going to use my example of, um, for the county seat, that's gonna, that would obviously be done in part regards to the correctional facility and sheriff department along with moving the county administration and the courthouse as possibly one day. Is that, is that a township item? Is, is that a community concern? Absolutely. Is it as serious as nine-one-one? I wouldn't go there. But again, I, I just, I just see this as wrong. I don't think we should do this. Um, but again, I, I'm, I'm just one vote. Um, and, but I think we, and I don't, I don't want to use the term precedent. I don't think precedence is a good term. I think it, it, we, it's, we are, we are an entity that is not statutory required to do this. And that's what separates us from schools, um, or colleges. So again, that's, that's my statement on the fact. So again, um, if it goes forward to tonight, I think the, what's gonna be in front of us, um, let me see here. We do have a statement for election workers postseason absentee for eighteen three eighty-nine thirty-one. So I think that if that's gonna be the motion tonight, um, so, you know, like Mark, Mark.
I just, I just want to clarify for the board. Now, I, my voice carries. Why is this not picking me up? I can talk loud. I just want to clarify for the board that there was a late email that came in today, hand-delivered from the city. They were having technology issues. Their internet is down. They couldn't get that to me before, I guess, before this morning. You have it, came in at nine fifty-five, hand-delivered to my office. So tonight, if you're gonna consider or somebody's gonna make a motion, eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents may not be the accurate figure any longer. So there'll have to be some working on this in between minutes meetings if it's decided to take this to the board tonight because that figure may not be accurate, given the information that came in from the city. But the agendas had already gone out.
Quirp locks.
Plus, we also have one that came in from Deerfield Township that I forwarded on to the chairman.
So. Yeah. Again, that, that, that goes to shut, you know, again, where do we draw the line? What, what dollar amounts are we gonna use? How are we going to? I think in committee, it was decided if we brought it forward, the, that the eighteen three eighty-nine thirty-one was gonna be the amount that was gonna be approved by the board. I would, I would, I would stick with, if the board does approve this, I would stick with that amount. I would hold true to the fact that the clerk did notify people of the opportunity several times. And that people had plenty of opportunity to not only turn it in, but turning. And then, and, and like I said, some people turned in, um, multiple things that, that the committee decided not to reimburse for. So again, to do nothing, I don't think we should, I, I don't think the, if it is going to be approved, I'll tell, I'll wear the hat and say I want to approve it. I don't think we should look at anything but what's, approved by, went through the, drawing a blank on even the committee I chaired for several years, uh, Finance Administration Committee. I think we should just go through and approval went through that. If you're, if the board is going to approve it and only that dollar amount. If you submitted it late, like anything else, if you're late, you're late. So, um, that's how I would look at it from that standpoint, wearing the hat of I would approve it. So. Anybody, I'll let other commissioners speak since we're open, since we all had a chance. Anybody else want to say anything else? Okay, this will move forward to this evening then. Next up, general public comments. We have anybody in the audience for general public comments? We haven't seen no one in the audience. Uh, Nicole, do we have anybody on the virtual? All right, very good. That next brings us to announcements. Commissioners, any announcements? We'll start with Commissioner, well, we'll start with Commissioner Angler this time. I was on the outside of the room, I'll switch to this side. Commissioner Swain.
Yes, I want to let everybody know that for the month of October, Rise Advocacy, uh, which if you don't know, that is, was the Women's Domestic Violence, uh, nonprofit, uh, before, their new name has been a few years, uh, Rise Advocacy, um, because, uh, they, they support both, uh, any victims of domestic violence, not just women. This month is, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness Month and to recognize victims of domestic violence. Uh, there's also doing a hundred men, uh, rising versus domestic violence, looking for a hundred men to donate a hun, hundred dollars, uh, to find their, uh, funding goal of ten thousand dollars. Also, for Lead Brewing has got a purple IPA that all proceeds will go to Rise.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. Uh, Vice Chairman Hope.
Uh, just to piggyback on what, uh, Commissioner Swain said, Rise is a great organization. They do a lot of work with ICRH and AICAP also. Just wanted to, wanted to add that, uh, Commissioner Horton and I had the, uh, privilege to attend the MAC conference. It was the first one that I had been to. It was really good, I thought. In the, the general sessions, they talked about the, the bill, community mental health bills and, uh, they're very concerned about those. They also said that, uh, the four-year term, uh, is getting some traction and Commissioner Moreno, I think he mentioned this a while back, uh, but it did pass out of the senate with only four no votes. So that's a four-year term for county commissioners. So that's getting some traction, which is good. There were breakout sessions. We tried to attend different ones so we could both get a, a little overview of what was going on. I went to one that was on ARP spending, uh, that was very, they were all good. Another one on the mental health funding. And of course, we talked about those, those two bills again. The last one was creating affordable housing and it was, uh, the speaker was Emily Dorr, the Executive Director of the Michigan State Land Bank Authority. And, uh, she talked about how every county, whether they have a land bank or not, they have a land bank because they have access to the Michigan State, uh, Land Bank Authority. And she, we talked about some things that communities can do to, uh, attract development of affordable housing. Uh, so that was interesting. One of those things where you kind of, once you learn a little bit, you realize how much you don't know about, about it. So, uh, it's an area I hope to learn a lot more about. But it, overall, it was good and it's good to meet other commissioners from other areas and, uh, see what they're, what they're doing.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Jowzinski.
I have nothing to add.
Right. Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Hutchinson. Yeah, I had echo, um, Commissioner Hope's, uh, comments on the MAC conference. I thought it was very informative. Him and I attended the mental health one together, but we tried to do different topics. One of the ones I attended was Rip, um, Lakes, Lake Management, and I found that to be quite interesting. We don't have a lot of dams and we do have some dams and some lake management in, uh, in Isabella County. And it was just fascinating, some of the responsibilities. And I learned that Board of Commissioners is actually responsible for a lot of that. So, um, that, that was an eye-opening, uh, situation for me. So I found that very, very interesting. So again, um, I think that's all, really all I'm gonna say tonight. I, I look forward to this evening and with that, I will adjourn the meeting at five forty-one.